Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
6:30 on Thursday, May 14th, 2020, and I'm going to call the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified, not really, Elementary School District to order. I have, first item is to consider adjustments. What I'm going to ask is everybody to mute themselves, then I am going to call you all out, at which point I'm going to ask you to unmute, and then we'll see what happens. It could be fun. All right. First item here is to consider adjustments or amendments to the agenda. I will ask board members to unmute themselves and ask you all if there are any adjustments or amendments to the agenda you would like to put in place. I'm seeing nodding, sage nodding of heads, so I'm going to take that as consensus. Cheryl's just got it. Oh, no, that is Cheryl. I thought it was Cheryl's picture. Cheryl's not, everybody okay? All right. I will say that item 4B is going to be put on a, we'll get to it if we've got time basis. I hope everyone will be okay with that. I don't want the meeting to go on forever. We have enough fun.
Yeah, Jack, this is Cheryl. I think that kind of adjustment is appropriate. We need to do all the budget-related things, so you're suggesting that we move that item to the last part of the agenda and don't include it at this meeting but at the next regular meeting if we don't have enough time.
Yeah, I think so. I just, I'm very cognizant that this is a special meeting and people's time needs to be respected.
Sure, thank you.
All right. So what I want to do now, just to start for the record, is to walk people through and ask each person to be recognized. If I fail to recognize you, I want you to tell me who you are. I see Lynn Carey on my, who's now waving. I see Kim Record, who I'm looking very solemn. Cheryl, I see Lynn, and I see Charles Chase. Melissa, Lynn left already on us. I see Jessup. I see Joe West Clark. Is that correct? I see Liz, Melissa, Chris Pratt, Doug, Michelle. I'm sorry, my screen is really messed up because I dropped the computer the other day. So, Michelle, I'm not, I can't see you. What am I looking at? Who are you?
Michelle Dolof.
Oh, hi, Michelle. Sorry. I'm embarrassed. Tommy Knocker, I'm going to guess that's our friend David Clark. Fact TV, Amanda, I always mess your last name up. Amanda Desmaris? Desmary?
Desmaris, yeah.
All right. Nancy? Nancy's iPad. Oh, I know who that is. Okay. Ricky's here. Paula Borashov, is that correct?
Yeah, Paula Borashov.
Okay. Dina's here. Maureen Parker and Cheryl Charles's audio. Is there anyone else that's here that I'm not seeing? Doug, I'm seeing now, sorry. And I think I saw Liz Hardy at one point. She must be here. There we are. Okay, so that's, did I miss anybody? Open your mic and yell at me if I did. Oh, I see somebody. Rhonda's iPhone is coming on. Rhonda? Can you identify yourself? Hello? Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I'm not sure who Rhonda is at this point. We are now on to, going on to item number three, public comments or correspondence. I have a couple pieces, but does anybody else have anything? We also have an iPhone unidentified. Could you identify yourself? Hello? Yes. Do you see yourself and tell me who you are? Oh, there we go. Hello?
Hi, Darcy Sprague. I'm just listening in on the meeting.
That's fine. Just for the record, it's always nice to know who people are.
Yep.
All right. Well, without further ado, do we have public comments or correspondence from anyone? Wave your hand or somehow let me know you'd like to speak. Oh, I see Dina waving her hand mightily. So, hi, Dina.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Yep.
I can hear you loud and clear. Well, not that loud.
So, I am speaking here. I want to introduce myself. I'm Dina Weisthisn, and I teach fourth grade at Westminster Center School. I'm here, it's hard, I've got many roles. So, in part, I am here as a representative of WNEA, of our education association, but I said also as a teacher in Westminster, and I am also a taxpayer in Westminster. I just wanted to briefly address, again, primarily as a representative of WNEA, that we, as an association, and as talking to my colleagues across the district, are very dismayed at the actions that the WNEA do.
Mary Fader, I can see you. I can hear you. We can hear you, sorry. Go ahead, Dina.
So, we are very dismayed at the actions of laying off the paras for next fall. We want to make sure that the public and that the school boards understand, which I hope they do, that this is approximately 42% of our support staff. We are really concerned what this means for our schools, what this means for our students. Aside from what we're going through, which we can talk about too, well, I guess I should say it that way, with what we're going through now, we know that students will actually need more support when we start school in the fall. And to actually be cutting to some great degree is really, really concerning to us. We know that, or from what we understand, the idea is that all of the general ed classroom positions will be eliminated, and this is really concerning. I know they're used in different ways at different schools. We also are very aware that the district is looking at ways to cut the budget, to save money. We understand that. We all know what we're going through, what our economy is going through, but we are really concerned. I mean, I'm looking at, again, from the lens of my elementary school. I'm thinking about kindergarten classrooms without support in there. We have other paras in our school that provide academic and emotional support. There's a wide range of jobs that they do, and the idea that all of our general ed paras are eliminated is really, really concerning for our students. And I just also kind of want to put this out to the board, that I'm kind of confused how, we know there's a way that the paras are combined across the districts at one time, but if our school boards want to have paras in their school, and our principals, maybe, I mean, I'm just putting that out, I'm questioning why if we have budgets, and I know we don't have a budget in our district yet, but I know the budget that was created did have these paras in there, I'm just questioning the wisdom of cutting it out, especially at this time.
Thank you for that. What I would like you to do, if you would not mind, is since this is a special meeting, what the time we can bring this up in more detail, if you'd like, would be at a regularly scheduled meeting, and if you would mind taking your concerns and putting them in writing, we'll make that part of the record then. We will be discussing that in more detail at that point, I believe, and I hope that will suffice for your colleagues who are here to support you, which I think I see several. Is that fair enough for all you? All right.
Jack, indicate when, Jack, this is Cheryl. Indicate when that meeting is.
Oh, yeah, it'll be on the 21st, I think it is.
A week from today, a week from today at 6:30.
Right. So, there you are on that. All right.
Can I just add one question? I mean, I guess my one question, the reason that I thought it was important to bring up today, is if you are talking about the budget, then this is definitely a part of that discussion.
And I fully appreciate that, because in fact, one of the discussion points will be whether we want to go in with the budget as currently proposed. Now, one does know that's a bottom-line budget, and one can make changes to that budget administratively during the course of the year, or even plan to make them, and one of the concerns will be whether or not, given the expected excision of monies across the board for all school districts, whether it's, whether we want to make cuts in this budget as currently printed, or whether we want to wait until we hear about the scope of the excisions before anything, any further actions in terms of the bottom-line number we present to voters. Again, this is a little premature, and it's off of our orders, so I'm going to declare myself out of order, and we'll bring this up in the right time. Anyone else wave a flag to let me know somehow that you're asking me a question. I'll go on chat, see if there's anything there. Don't see it. Guess that's it. So, with that, I'm going to move on to agenda item four, and this is Negotiations Committee Report and Solicitation of Board Priorities. You know, I really don't like knocking people off the meeting and then inviting them back in. I find that I'm always uncomfortable with that. It feels unfriendly to me. So, what I'd like to do, with the permission of my board, is to move that, and move that to the new 4F, and we will continue on. We've delayed 4B, we've moved 4A onto the new 4F, and now we get to confirmation of and modifications to the proposed budget with everyone's approval. The reason this item is here, I've sent my board members, and they may not know they've been sent this, but I've sent my board members the report and budget that we created back in March. It's, how long is it? Seventy-three pages of scintillating reading, but mostly spreadsheets. But I want you to have it so that we can discuss both the bottom line and whether or not we want to make any changes in that bottom line prior to presenting this yet again to voters. Actually, it's not yet again, for the first time, actually, again, to voters. So, the bottom-line numbers, just so we all know, and if you're having trouble with this, I will read you some of this stuff. We had asked the assembled voters of the district to appropriate the sum of $6,792,186 and, important, 51 cents as the amount. Now, this was based on where we thought we were all at back in February and in March. We signed this thing in the second of March. A lot of things have changed in the period since then, and the question is, do we want to take a look at making any changes to that recommendation, that bottom-line recommendation? I'll ask questions across the group. Why don't we start with Lynn and Charles, because you're closest to be on my screen? You guys, what's your thought about this? You guys want to make, want to look at any changes to this budget? There are things you can do.
No, you put it down.
I have no change.
And by the way, I would ask non-board members to put their gizmos on mute, if we could. Thank you. Lynn, go ahead. And Charles?
I have no changes that I can see.
No.
All right. Jessup, you're up next.
I don't have any changes.
All right. Melissa? I'm seeing a nod note. Is your system working this time, Melissa? I remember it wasn't the last time. By gosh, it is still kerfuffled somehow. There we go. Hello? Is that you?
It was.
All right. Okay, I'll take that as a, keep it as it is. Cheryl?
Jack, I heard you say a number that I, I thought our number was 6.6, and it might be helpful for people to know that that number is less than the budget from last year. I would say that I believe we should keep it the way it is. We all know that we may not have all those monies, and we may not spend all those monies, but I think this isn't the right time to make cuts into what we did discuss and recommend that we take to the voters.
Have I, who have I neglected to ask to speak on this? Anyone from my board members? I think we've got everyone. I tend to concur. Without getting into details, I sat in on the discussions at the legislature, talked to several members in person, sat in on the VSB, VSA joint discussion, and the thing that I learned is, really, no one else was making cuts at this, or to the budgets in panic. Most people aren't sure they're going to pass, but we feel that we should start with what we think is what the schools need, and quite candidly, if there's a last-minute excision of 3% off approved budgets, we should not exercise money in anticipation of their excising even more money later on. So, I'm going to take that as a, there is no interest in my members of changing the budget number, and we will move forward.
Jack, this is Cheryl again. If I could insert, I now see, I just misheard you, but the number was $6,792,186. I thought I heard you say eight, but I see that it's.
No. If you're, no one's asking to put more money into this, I'm guessing.
Not at all. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. So, we're good. By the way, I see a note from Chris Pratt, and this is something that is a sensitive point for me, is there is a CC, a closed caption saying if people want help interpreting people's speaking, that can be done. There's a closed caption thing at the bottom of this screen, and I want to make sure that that's available. All righty. Well, we are confirming that now. Let's see, budget, I guess it was confirmation modification and budget approval process. I would entertain a motion to just confirm the numbers as we stated them. I think that would be, that was the intention of 4D. Does anybody want to confer? I'll look for a motion to that effect, that we are confirming the dollar amounts.
A motion to that effect from Cheryl. I'm moved that we affirm the budget figure that was approved by the board to take to the voters for their approval or disapproval in the amount that you cited. I don't know that I need to do that again. I think probably someone has that, but yes, I still move.
All right. And again, I'll pull up, if I can, the actual dollar amounts. This was the amount of $6,792,186.51. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Raise your hand or say aye.
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 Wish we have unanimity on this. Thank you. All right. Elections process, this is the fun one. And one of the reasons why I was very concerned that Kim and possibly some of the other town clerks came, because we have a process that we are proposing, and I want them to tell me what we need to do to make it as acceptable as it can be under the circumstances. Kim, I don't see your colleagues here, and maybe they are, but you want to speak for the collective?
Michelle is here. She's my assistant clerk.
Okay, sorry.
And, yeah, she's usually my backup official, election official.
Yep.
It is a lot more work. I'm not as concerned. You said that by looking at your notes, you're going to pick up the cost.
We agreed to that in our last meeting, and I, we may ask people to confirm that, but yes.
Yeah. My biggest concern with doing the mailing is actually having my BCA and being responsible for asking the BCA to come in and do the counting. The stuffing, yeah, it's a lot bigger stuff. I know I do tax bills every July, and we do over 700 tax bills. It does take a day, but it's getting the BCA to come in and actually count these votes. Yeah, I'm not sure how I want to deal with that. If I just, I would feel horrible if I asked them to come in and something did happen to them.
Let me, let me just kind of walk my colleagues through the discussions, and then I'm going to let Cheryl lead it, because Cheryl spent some quality time with Ally Bigwood today to kind of articulate this. Some of you, I hope, read the email I sent around about the process that we're looking at. I did a poll of the so-called stranded 18s, folks that have had their budgets held up by the COVID-19 epidemic, and the process by which they were going to go forward. Some districts out there are doing a full mail-in, doing mail-in ballot only. Some are doing a mix, where they would do absentee ballots with greater or lesser levels of emphasis. Folks that were doing in-person voting, we're discussing the use of drive-by voting, which I have no idea how we make that work, but I guess that's something we have to collectively figure out. And the concerns, well, I'll let Cheryl take it from here. This was Cheryl's negotiation with Ally today. Cheryl, you're up, if you'd like.
Well, I can make comments about it, and would welcome Kim and Michelle, if you want to add in as well. Let me start by saying that I think none of the town clerks really want to deal with, or maybe are not even well-prepared to deal with a full-on mail ballot approach. As Allison Bigwood, the clerk for Westminster, said today, you know, we've never done that before. And for Westminster, right, for Westminster, that's more than 2,500 voters, that means more than 5,000 envelopes, in, again, a process that's never been tried before. Having said that, I think one sentiment I've heard from town clerks is that they would actually perhaps prefer that we still have an in-person meeting, like Westminster is aiming to do on June 6th for an approval of their board, their budget, I should say, the town budget. I personally, this is an opinion, I don't think that's the right approach to take. I think that any in-person meeting, one is in violation of the governor's recommendation that no meeting of 10 people or more be held, and I think it just puts people at risk. So, I think where we're heading, and I welcome the board's discussion about this, I think we're heading toward the kind of combination that Jack mentioned a moment ago. And in that case, we would have to establish a date certain for a date to vote. It would have to be a scheduled meeting, an election day, a date that we pick ideally in June, so that the vote could occur before the end of the current budget year. At the same time, to really encourage requests of absentee ballots, so that as few people as possible would be at the polling site in person on that date. The polling site will have to be established in ways never done before, you know, with the, all the physical distancing rules and that kind of thing, and even so, you've still got people who need to be working there as volunteers. It's just an unfortunate situation, but if we can reduce the number of people who actually vote in person, have as many people as possible do so by absentee, and the drive-by that Jack mentioned today, I just read in yesterday's Brattleboro Reformers, that Bellows Falls Town is creating a way for people to vote for the town budget for the first time, not in a town meeting format, but for the first time by Australian ballot, which is what we're talking about here, a paper ballot process, where people are going to drive by and get the ballot handed to them, sit and park, and fill it out, and then hand it back to go into a secure box. I think one of the things that Kim just mentioned is, no matter what we do here, there still has to be a physical counting of ballots. We know in Westminster that the machine used to take the paper ballots is out now at the company that sets it up for the primary election that will take place in August. So, I just want to reiterate that there's nothing about this that is particularly easy, but I do believe that certainly in Westminster, and I think in all the towns, is a willingness to try to work this out, so that we give the voters an opportunity to vote on a budget, so that ideally, we start the school year with an approved budget. I'm open for comments or suggestions, Jack, and anything else you might want.
I think I saw Melissa's hand up, though. Maybe it's just she's got a frozen screen. Melissa, did you?
I think she's frozen.
Oh, mercy. Melissa, you may have to write it as a comment note, because unfortunately, or pick up the phone and call, so we can hear you as well as see you, but I do want you to be able to participate. Yeah, the, there we go. Oh, you were, okay. You were, as I said, the idea here is it's still going to be a lot of overhead for town clerks, because I think we will have to work with the clerks to get out, get out the absentee ballot, whatever the absentee ballot query, I don't know what we call that thing, when if you ask somebody to, there's a form to request an absentee ballot, right, Kim?
Yeah, they're just called a request form.
Right.
Either call in, or someone can come in and request one.
All right. Well, if we do an absentee ballot request form, mass mailing, it's still a pretty big mass mailing, particularly for Westminster, and I may have a little sit-down with you, Kim, and with your colleagues, and figure out the mechanics of that. You know, I think that the idea here is, I would like you all to own that, but I would like it all to be the same, since the votes are going to be merged together, the process should be one that's mutually agreeable to all parties. I think that. Uh, I, I, I think that sending out, uh, request forms, mass mailing request forms, seeing what we get back is costs a lot less than, uh, just mass mailing, uh, mail-in ballots to people that may not even be around. Uh, and that's kind of the process. Lynn, I see, Lynn, Morgan and Charles, you guys are, any thoughts on this?
We both like the idea of the drive-by voting. I like having less people coming in contact with each other. And it seems like something that we could figure out how to do.
All right. Well, we'll talk to your colleague in the, uh, in the, in the office down there and see how she feels about it. I have not heard back from her. I've sent her a couple of notes and I'll get her a call tomorrow. Jessa? What say you on this?
Um, I like the idea of sending out the forms to request an absentee ballot instead of requiring people to call or come in to get it. I think you might get a better response that way. And then drive-by voting. I, that seems like a reasonable idea to me. I don't know where exactly you do it in Grafton.
They would do a big drive-by in, uh, Grafton Ponds. They're not having July fourth this year, so.
But I think that's really the only reasonable way to do it. Um, unless we, you know, used the entirety of the field in Grafton Ponds and let people stand ten feet apart and vote, but I don't think that is going to happen.
All right. Um, at, thank you. As it affects the, uh, warning, what I'll be looking for, and I gotta make sure I know what I'm talking about. Hold on a second. What I'll be looking for is a, uh, when, when we approve the warning would be to, uh, change the, uh, to elect by, we, we'll be asking them to, uh, vote at the, at the designated places in each community. And we'll have language here, which I'll ask you to let me write, uh, to, uh, that right now says they're hereby warranted to meet at the Bellas Falls Union High School. And this would be, uh, warrant to, uh, to vote at the, uh, at, at the appropriate, uh, locations, uh, or to send an absentee ballot no later than the date. And that would be the way that we will handle that. Uh, I, I will ask your discretion since I want to make sure the language is sufficiently tidy that when we come to authorizing the warning, that that would be the process. I see Lynn, your hand is up.
Um, I didn't quite understand what you're saying. Are you saying that we're having the voting meeting at the middle school?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. Uh, what I'm, the vocal on this is not great. I'm saying that we would have, we would change the language from what it says now, which is to assemble at the high school. That's the language we had in March. To change it to, to vote at the designated voting places in their communities. And we would also change it to include, uh, uh, absentee balloting as being encouraged. Uh, I, I haven't figured out the exact language, but I think we can do that with Kim and Ally and everybody. Yes, Jessa?
Um, we kind of dodged something that Kim said, that the BCA is currently not comfortable handling paper ballots.
Yeah. Um, I, 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 we're going to have, this is going to be an issue now. It's probably going to be even a bigger issue in the primary when we get second helping of the coronavirus spike. And God knows, uh, how we deal with it in, uh, in November. But, uh, I, I, I think we're going to, I'm going to be asking, uh, I'm going to be asking Will and the gang at Montpelier, as to recommended best practices for that. This was their idea. I think they get to tell us how to do it. Uh, you know, I made a joke about ironing them all before we, we opened up the envelopes, but I'm not quite sure. Uh, we, we will have, we really do have to look at that and I don't have a good answer yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't skipped over.
Well, you know, it kind of was. Sorry. Because I don't have an answer. I don't know what to do.
Um, I'd certainly say in talking with Ally, Allison Bigwood today too, she's deeply concerned about that as well.
Yeah, and, and we, we literally will, you know, I don't know if we have to fake them or what we're going to do, but we will figure something out. Uh, can people wear gloves? Absolutely. I'm, I'm hoping we'll, we'll, if we have to go buy, you know, the glove, the, uh, the glove, the PPE and all that. Well, by gosh, that's what we'll do. Um, and by the way, just so people don't have sticker shock. Um, we did say that we would pay for all this, but when you figure, you know, seventy cents per, uh, per, uh, application for, for a, uh, for, for an absentee ballot, plus the cost of the absentee ballot, plus the PPE, plus the rest of this. Um, it's not going to be free. And I don't know what the bottom line number is. If somebody wants to set a limit on it, they could, but I can't promise we'll stick to it either. Uh, because I just frankly don't know. And I'm hoping that that will suffice here, uh, that we'll get a bill, uh, that everybody be nice to us with these bills and that we will approve it once we have them. Uh, does that seem horrible to anybody? Seems horrible to me, but I don't have a choice. Yes, Lynn?
My thought is that it's something we have to do. And whatever the cost is, we'll have to come up with the funds and hopefully the towns can also help out in whatever way they possibly can. And if we can do the drive-by uh, voting, where that would possibly be cheaper because you don't have all of these extra fees, hopefully. Maybe we can cut the costs there.
Well, if, if we announce that we're doing drive-by, maybe people will feel comfortable with that. Uh, my, my dad used to say not having any options to, uh, simplify the decision process. And this is a big.
Right.
Alrighty. Um, so where were we? Uh, were we authorizing? But what did we, what was, what was, I, I've lost my spot. Somebody else help me here. Uh, do we, do we have a, uh, do we have a, uh, a motion on this?
I think we need to discuss the elections process first.
Yeah, well, let, let's continue. Well, as opposed,
That's Article One of the warning.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I'm going to let, uh, I'm going to let, um, Cheryl had some, uh, insight from, uh, from Ally and then I'll ask Kim if she thinks it's rational about the, about allowing people to nominate themselves or have somebody nominate them to run for our various seats. Cheryl, you talked about, to Ally about this?
I, I did speak with Ally about that today. If we look at, I don't know whether everyone's looking at this, but Jack sent around again just before this meeting, the warning that we released in, uh, March about, um, the proposed meeting of April nine. Uh, Jessa, you were just referring to Article One, which was to elect by ballot, the moderator, the clerk, the treasurer. Article Two is the one that allows us to say, uh, that we, even by taking this vote, this is not to say that, um, we're in agreement with the forced merger. Article Three is the article that actually has the budget figure in it, the six point seven, six point eight million dollar budget. Article Four, uh, has to do with what, something we proposed before, uh, the one hundred thousand dollars from fiscal year nineteen surplus from Westminster actually to create a tuition reserve fund. Um, Article Five, twenty-four thousand to create a capital reserve fund. This is just to say that we might want to put on, uh, an Australian-style ballot, uh, all of these articles. Um, Six gives us the authority to borrow, which we should include as well. Uh, and, um, Seven, oh, is the one about electing board members. And then there are terms related, uh, described below that. And to that point, which is what Jack just asked a moment ago, um, Allison Bigwood said that we could each, those people who are willing to run, to be elected or re-elected to this union board, one, we know by law in Vermont right now, we don't need to have signed petitions, but we would need to indicate to our town clerk that we're willing to have our names put on the ballot. And then each town clerk would check to make sure that that person is a registered voter. That was really the only, uh, issue, uh, to be, uh, qualified under these, these circumstances, um, according to, to Ally today. She had a term for it. Um, so I think we have a couple of things that are, are going on in terms of process here. As she said, it, it would be called a consent for cand- candidacy. And that would then allow the clerks, uh, to put the names of those people, uh, running from each of the towns, um, on the, on the ballot. In addition to, uh, the other articles and, and most specifically the budget information. Jess, I'm not sure I understood your question, but this gives us a little bit more framing for the whole of what we're trying to think about here as a, an election process.
Yes, I thought Jack was just asking us to, um, propose the terms of the war and wording. Sorry.
Well, like, it was a couple of things. One, I wanted to make sure that we tie it in, in my, what I did ask, you're right, Jessa. Uh, I had asked, uh, for essentially to make sure I had some permission to, uh, to adjust the warning about how we, how we actually conduct the vote overall. And, and that is correct because right now the language here is that we're supposed to be at the high school. Uh, and, and I, I do want to, uh, make clear, uh, discussion that, uh, Chris Pratt had with me, uh, and, and Lynn had with me, uh, today, which is that notwithstanding the, uh, sentiments and wishes of our, our friends in the Westminster Town Government, the, the building is still closed as are the grounds to all third-party activities. And, uh, that's something that that they'll have to deal with, with our administrators, but that is, uh, that's something that, uh, you know, is, is a little off-topic for us. But, uh, we, we really cannot have town meetings or either three or one right now. We've, the, we have, uh, a, we have an elementary school building in Grafton, high school building in Bellas Falls, a, uh, community school in, in, uh, Westminster Center and, and the West West Building. And those are essentially off-limits. Uh, people in Grafton will see that we actually have police tape around the playground equipment. That's how seriously we've taken it. I don't know how well that, uh, tape's holding up, but that's the, that is our official, uh, view about, uh, utilization of those spaces. Be that as it may, we got to change the, uh, we, we've got to change that language. I will ask, I, while we break this out, I, I'm going to look for a, um, a, a vote by you all to allow the chair to modify the language of the preamble of the warning to determine the voting uh, process in consultation with the town clerks of the, uh, member communities. I think that's probably something we should do. Lynn?
I so moved.
All right. Any further discussion? I think that, is that language overly broad? Is people comfortable with that?
Yes. I think we should add the, we might have, we might need to add, um, with the, uh, legal review as well. I'm not sure.
I will take that as a friendly amendment. Uh, and we'll go forth with that. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, Cheryl, you still thinking about it?
Well, yeah, I, and I, and at the same time, I was just thinking it, it doesn't address the kind of process, uh, that we're talking about using. I was, uh, I think you just got all the votes you need for this, but I was also thinking about a motion to the effect that we, um, could, we move to employ an Australian ballot for the items that were previously included in the warning for the recount meeting that was to be held on April ninth with a model that allows for in-person voting as well as absentee ballots with the details to be worked out by, um, the clerks and the other relevant town officials.
While it's a bit irregular, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to, uh, take that as a friendly amendment. I like, I like your language better, uh, than mine and ask my colleagues if they have any objection to using that language. Seeing none, can we confirm, uh, the ayes and nays for this? Got one, two, three, four. Cheryl, are you in favor of your own amendment?
Yes, I am.
Oh, there you go. Okay, so it's unanimous. All right. So let's, let's, let us move, that was, that was the elections process part. Now comes the other fun part of, um, the various articles. Um, I actually need a little guidance, uh, from my administrators. I think that we still need to have, uh, moderator, clerk and treasurer of the district. Am I correct in that? Uh, Chris and/or Lynn?
Yes, you are, you are accurate.
Okay. So then I'm assuming unless I hear an objection that we will leave Article One intact and we will have space on our, we'll modify Article One to include, uh, nominees, self-appointed nominees for this and, uh, and, uh, and go there, uh, so that we'll have a moderator, uh, and a blank and maybe we'll have ten people that'll want to be moderator and clerk, treasurer, all the rest of that. Does that make sense? Is that weird to anybody? I see a painted expression. Is that? I've lost that painted expression. Was, was that yours, Jessa? I, I think we've lost Jessa. It was so painful that we, um, that we, uh, Jessa, are you still there?
Sorry, yes, I am here.
Okay, did you, uh, was there, did you, I didn't know if you were distracted in, uh, the house or if you were going to make a comment on this.
No, distracted at the house, sorry.
It happens with all. Um, huh, I, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to interrupt this briefly because I've, I see a, a note from, uh, from, uh, David Clark, uh, uh, and I, and I do hope this is, I, I don't know if this ma- messes things up or not. Apparently in, uh, Governor Scott's, uh, conference today, he was suggesting that school budgets be all re-voted in August. I don't know how that mechanism would take place, uh, unless he had legislative support for it. And the, the, his own, his own, uh, Secretary of State has said that we can't go back and, and do this. So I'm not quite sure what that, what's happening there. Uh, uh, David, do you have some elaboration on this? Well, Jack, it's, Jack, it's simply a, a VPR, um, story that Deb Wright has passed through to me. I have no more knowledge than that. Okay, because, because I, 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 as I said, I have talked to our very, the various committee chairs in the last little while and, and I, I think that one has come as a bit of a surprise. They, they had said, at least the House has said that they, that they really want to come back and reconvene in August to take up the issue of the stranded 18 and funding generally. But I don't, but they've also said that they are most, most concerned that all district, all the 18 put this before voters before July 1st. So I'm still proceeding on that assumption and plan to go forward unless I hear an objection from my colleagues.
No objection.
Hearing none, I'm going to go forward and say that we are, we've confirmed, we are all in agreement then on Article 1 and I will just with the modification of some language so there's a place to have people, these are all one-year terms, moderator, clerk, and treasurer, and we'll have a space on the ballot for, because they have to, but... Actually, I'm wondering now that I'm thinking about this. Should we have an Article 1 or should we simply do what we've done down in... Actually, I think we'll leave it and just do what we've done on Article 7, where we'll have space for each person. I will, again, I'm going to ask your collective indulgence to let me tidy up the language with my administrators here so that we've got it right. And I will send it around to everybody for your signatures. And if you hate it, let me know. Article, is that broadly acceptable? Do I see any waving of hands? Article 2, go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, Article 2. I think that if anything, if it just means we're getting someplace where people can say yes on a, on a ballot this time, Article, I'd kind of like to keep Article 2 with a yes or no on that. I'm hoping everybody says yes. Article 3, we've agreed, stays the same. There is no change. Chris, as far as you know, because of the numbers of students or anything, that that equalized pupil count, does this changes in any way, shape, or form? Or, or Lynn, is that numbers, those numbers still holding up? The $18,734 per equalized pupil, nothing's been changed there?
As far as I know, I know the per, our daily ADM, you know, average daily membership of students, you know, that's a moving target, so that changes. But yeah, the 18 is, is still accurate.
Okay, then fine. The $100,000 from the surplus to create a tuition reserve fund, people still want to do that or we want to put, we want to go save $100,000 and chuck it into changing the number? That's what it was that I want to ask you about. So we want to take $100,000 off the 6792? I'm seeing no from Melissa, seeing a couple of no's. Any thoughts? Not, not, not seeing a whole lot of, oh yes, Jessa.
Well, the only thought, so I went to find the Phil Scott's afternoon announcement and I'll put the link to the VPR site over here in chat because actually he's encouraging all schools to revote their already voted-upon budgets and is trying to get, discuss renegotiating with the teachers. So it's not just put our 18 that he wants in August. He's encouraging places to revote their budgets in general. I haven't had a chance to read it all yet, but I'll put that up there.
Well, we will be making legal commitments to people to make purchases by August. We'll actually spend a chunk of our money.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure more will come of it tomorrow.
Yeah, lovely, lovely surprise. Chris, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, it's my, it's my understanding that based on, I mean, what Jessa's referring to is that we'll have, they'll make more decisions on tomorrow. I don't think those are one of them, but that is something that came up in discussion in regards to when they make the decision in regards to the 19 districts that either had a budget voted down and didn't vote on. That is something that is in the mix, that they might suggest that all budgets go back to a vote, but we have to wait and see what happens.
There need to have legislative approval of that, seems to me. That's not something you can just go do. The budgets will have been set for...
No, and I think it's, you know, this is the first time I heard about it today when Secretary Education brought it up. So we have to wait to see how much traction that actually has.
Well, it might be a chicken heart way of trying to get the 3% rescission that they're looking for. I think if they want to do that, they just need to stand up and on it. Jessa?
Well, the, the part of the reason, well, there was many reasons that we decided to put the $100,000 in the tuition reserve. One, because we don't know exactly how many kids are going to the middle school every year if they come and go. But two, that money specifically comes from Westminster. That's really how we ended up with that. And I think if the lawsuit is ruled in our favor and we can all split apart, that does sort of leave it in a convenient place to be divided up or moved without losing sight of the fact of where it came from. And I don't know if we want to start, it would be great to reduce the budget by $100,000. I think we determined it would save everybody like a penny in taxes. So it's, I think it's better in the long run to just have it there, but people should know what it's from, what it's reserved for. And that once we remove it from the budget and save that tiny bit of taxes for people, it can still leave the budget there. If there's a mandatory reduction of say 3%, they're not going to take into consideration the fact that we already took out that money.
Right.
Who just spoke? Sorry.
Oh, I mean, this is Cheryl. I was just agreeing with what Jessa just said.
Okay, well, what this is telling me is that Charlotte's earlier request that I do a walkthrough of these things in a video form. The more I look at this, the more I think, yeah, I better get on with that because this is going to take some explaining. Okay, moving on. Any thoughts about the $24,166, which I remember how that got set up? We leave that as it is? Most people get an objection? I don't see any objections. We need the, do we still need the borrowing funds as needed language, Chris? Because I don't recall doing that in a regular, like, high school budget. Or do we do that in the, do we do that in the town district meeting?
You might want to keep it in there, not knowing, you know, what the, everything's still up in the air against borrowing in the deficit that we're seeing at the education level. I think, I don't think it would hurt to keep it in there. I think it'd be safe to do so.
All right, fine, then we will do that. Article 7, I may, God, that, did I write that? I'm ashamed. All right, there's got to be a way of simplifying that, but I can't think of what it's going to be. What I would encourage is people understand, again, that these are reserved seats selected by the district. I will be looking for, for folks to fill those seats. I do not want to have a bunch of empty seats like your friends in Rockingham. I am not above drafting my current board members if I don't see folks. So be aware, you might get a friendly call. And I'm actually kind of hoping most of you will sign up because I like working with you all. But that's here nor there. What I would like is I might talk to some of you individually about whether or not you want to be doing the, they're all for every two years thereafter. I think that language is, yeah, one-year, two-year. The, we need to, somebody's got to run for one year and somebody's got to run for two-year in all these positions. And depending on your glutton, your appetite for punishment, I will, you know, ask you all to, work with you all to, if you're interested in running, to figure out which you want to run for so that we've got, so you're not running against each other and we've got both slots filled. And by the way, to my, our general public, if you'd like to do this, please let us know. Have at it, is what I would say. Okay, Article 8. Many of you may have noticed that we didn't ever approve a compensation level. And Article 8 as written does not have dollars attached to it. We ought to probably have dollars attached to it or should, or how would we like to? In the original plan, we were going to have this open meeting and people could discuss how much we were worth. We now have to commit to a dollar figure. Cheryl, how much were they paying you guys when it was just Westminster?
Jessa helped me with this before. Do we think it was, I know the chair was something like 11 or 1,200. I think board members were something like 800, 700, something like that.
Something like that.
I don't have the number in front of me, Jack.
All right, well, we need to, we need to have an agreement on the numbers because this is a place where we really do have to have a vote. So somebody want to pick a set of numbers, propose it, and we'll, we'll knock it about?
Wasn't, Rockingham just posted one, did they not? Maybe in the 500s? Do you guys remember what Athens and Grafton had?
We were, we were 500. We had 500 and 400, I think. I see, I see two hands up, one from Lynn and one from David. I'm going to take them in that order. Lynn?
Um, I was wondering if it's possible... Connection is unstable. Is it working now?
I don't, yeah, I'm hearing you. I don't know whose connection is unstable. We'll find out.
Okay, I was thinking that with the situation we're in right now, is it possible at this point for us to do this position for the first two years for no pay and then reevaluate and add the pay in, the compensation in?
Well, one way we could do that is just to-
I'm fine with that, but I think we have to put one year.
One year?
I just think it has, I think everything on here has to be worded for one year.
Okay, that makes sense. It just seems like it would be a help with our budget.
You just cut out, I'm sorry, Lynn.
I was just wondering if even, are you hearing me?
Intermittently.
Oh dear.
If you can, just, if you can write it in the...
You can, you may have less trouble then if you turn off the camera while you're speaking for a second.
Turn off the camera. How do I do that? It's not fitting?
Down on the lower left-hand corner.
I think you found it.
You've done it.
All right, can you hear me now?
Okay.
Is it working better?
Actually, much better.
Is it working?
It is.
Yes.
Okay, is, is doing it, one year even could possibly help us through the, through us getting back on track after all of this that's going on?
I will look to somebody to-
Are you going to make a motion?
Okay, yes, I make a motion that on Article 8, that we set that there'll be no compensation for the first year and to be reevaluated after that. Does that work?
I have no objection except I think we more than earned our $0 this year.
Definitely, but I just didn't know if that would be one, we could help get through this.
It'll certainly help eliminate excess competition for these slots.
What are other people's thoughts on it?
I think this is a time of such hardship, I'm, you know, I'm very supportive of it. I, I am. I, that doesn't take anything away from how hard this group works and other board members work and how much volunteer time people put in. But I think it's, we've got just a whole number of people really, really suffering right now. So I think this would be a good thing to do.
Okay, I'm going to, any further comment? I guess I'm going to need to get a yea or nay on this. All in favor of Lynn's, Lynn's motion? And do we have our scribe here? Is he gone? All in favor of Lynn's motion, say aye. Oh, I, so wait a minute, I've got a note from Chris Pratt. Chris? Wait, wait, pardon me. Chris, I saw your, did I not? Chris? Ms. Pratt? No, no, okay, so we're back to ayes. All right, ayes and nays. I see a Lynn, yay, a Charles, yay, Cheryl, yay, Melissa, yay, a Jessa, yay. So the motion carries to, to assign a net worth of zero for the work we're doing for the coming year. All right.
It's more palatable if you think about what it worked out to hourly last year. Hundreds of hours for $500, so it feels better when you-
An hourly rate is not much different between a half a penny and zero.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
I will say, just for the record, I do worry that we're going to have a hard enough time to attract people without having any money at all for these positions. But I, I stand as a lonely minority and a non-voting one at that. All right, we won't have an Article 9 because there is no, oh, yes, actually, I, we should ask about this. We did have an article from, we did have a recommendation on the school advisory commissions. I'm not sure that we necessarily need to have that because that was really more a way of saying, yes, we recognize that they're in there. I think that's more an item for the day when we get back to normal order and figure out if we have a, if we have modifications to the Articles of Agreement because we all know right now nobody's agreeing to them. But that's a thing for a town meeting, I think, more than something we do here. People think we should do the lary слaсть and language and put all that stuff in or not? Don't all speak at once?
That, this is Cheryl. I don't think, I don't assume it's valid.
Okay, Lynn?
At the town, at the town of meetings, we already pulled together the commission and the people in Athens voted on having a commission. Isn't that the same thing that we were doing back then?
This was your, well, in some ways, yes, but it's basically- Well, in some ways, yes, but it's basically, right now, those are commissions and committees of the individual towns. You can have a commission and committee of the town on global warming or the situation in Afghanistan, but it doesn't, it doesn't compel anybody to listen to them. I thought that the idea here was to, notwithstanding the fact that we aren't approving the Articles of Agreement, to have a little pocket that says, notwithstanding all that, we want to have an official relationship as far as the, as far as the district's concerned. You'll recall, we had, in the early days, had some concern about whether or not we send them emails, whether or not we give them a place during our agenda and all that stuff. And I think right now, there's no reason not to do all that, but if we change the language, it would compel future boards to do it. I just think that for the, it's an item that I wanted people to discuss in an open session and I don't know if we can really do that in an Australian ballot, but I'm willing to put it in if people feel strongly about it. Judging by the lack of response, I'm thinking we should be mildly about it. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I don't think it's well-suited for the Australian ballot. And I do think if Lynn said that each of the towns discussed it, and I think that's where that belongs right now.
All right, I will entertain a motion to eliminate Article nine from our Australian ballot.
So moved.
All right, all in favor unless there's further discussion? Got one eye, two eyes, three, four, five, so that Article nine is eliminated. Peachy. All right, then we got that all done. The last part of this is we need to approve a warning to be sent to the, to the voters of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District to be signed by members, including the Articles as discussed and modified. I will need an affirmative vote on that and then I'll be sending around the written version for your digital signatures. Any, any comment, any, I'm making this motion.
I have a last minute comment.
Yeah, go ahead, last one.
On Article seven, coupled with our other statements in there regarding the lawsuit that may or may not wrap up this year, do we want to consider one-year positions all around?
Part of the reason for the language as it is written is because this is the language that is in the interim Articles of Agreement. And until such time as we adopt and modify interim Articles of Agreement, we are covered, we are constrained by those rules. My understanding is we didn't want to touch that stuff because we don't want to do anything that indicates even indirectly that, that we agreed to any of that stuff. That was the reason for it. Now, I do understand, we are going to have as an agenda item, not in May, but June, a discussion of creating a wind down process should a miracle happen and the Supreme Court rule in our favor. I've got some fairly specific ideas as to how we might do that, but that's, we're sorry, seven forty-four and I don't want to touch that puppy for now, if you don't mind. So, are you satisfied with that bad explanation, Jessa?
I am, yes.
All right.
Jack, this is Cheryl. To your proposed motion, will we do include a date, do we not? We haven't discussed that yet. Approval warning?
Yes, thank you. We had some extensive conversation about that in a bunch of emails today as to whether twenty-fourth, twenty-ninth, you know, twenty-third was the date. I was under the impression that we needed a full forty days. I saw something from Sue Stack today that indicated thirty-five was sufficient. Lynn? You and I had the last conversation about that. Do you remember what the recommendation was from Sue? I can go find it if you'd be.
I think what she said was that we could get away with it for thirty-five days if she brings it or tries, you know, sends it in to be published tomorrow. She was off today. But if she brings it in to be published tomorrow, it'll go in the paper next Wednesday. And then from that day with the thirty-five days, it would be roughly about the twenty-fourth.
Okay, does the, does the Brattleboro reformer publish on Fridays or is there other weekends these days?
She would send it, she would send it in on the deadline, I think it's sometime Monday.
All right.
So, she would send it in tomorrow and they would publish it on Wednesday, next Wednesday, the twentieth.
And, and the.
And then thirty-five days from then.
Does that be the twenty-fifth? I just don't want to get hung up about this. This is how we ended up stumbling into July last year.
Well, let me go through and check.
It is, I just did it on the calendar. It is the twenty-fourth. We could hedge one day and go with the twenty-fifth.
Well, most of our meetings are on Thursday. I'll let Chris talk.
Which would be the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, Chris?
Looking at Sue's email earlier that she sent to Lynn, Jack and I, is that twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth is when she would recommend, based on postings and everything.
All right. Well, Lynn, when we were asked to pick a date out of the air as the one that I was going to recommend to you, per the request of Jeff Francis and of the Legislative Committee, I had picked the twenty-fifth and had put in provisional. Do you folks feel comfortable with the twenty-fifth? It's a Thursday.
And to clarify, that means that is election day and then we need to work with the town clerks to figure out when absentee ballots are announced, but that, that would be the day that actual polling occurs for those who want to do it in person. Is that correct?
Right, and, and it would be, you know, presumably midnight or something like that on the twentieth. We'd have to get ballots in by the twenty-fifth. Counting would take a day or two. Unlike a, a regular election, it would be my, I, I know how states do all mail-in, handle it and they don't count, they don't put everybody counting them up all at midnight and all that garbage. They take a couple of days to do it and I would presume that we would understand if our town clerks and the boards that do this stuff might take several days. As long as they get it done before July first, I'm fine. So, I postmarked the absentee ballots on that date. That would be, I think that works from their perspective.
And I think looking at when we were counting the dates, the twenty-fifth would be the earliest you could have it.
I mean, we could, we could delay it another day, but then we're Friday and I don't think I want to be doing this on Friday, Thursday, April.
I think Thursday, the twenty-fifth is, was your original thought, Jack, so I would go with that.
I just have a question for Kim about what it says for at least Grafton counting absentee ballots because I know a lot of places where they just did like an absentee only primary. They had a week and seven days after that puts us into July. Is that a problem?
So, you're asked, what is it you're asking whether or not?
So, if people, if the absentee ballots have to be postmarked by midnight, the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth, what's the timeframe you give them all to arrive before they won't be counted?
Well, typically when we have an election, they all have to, all absentees have to be in by seven o'clock the night of the closing of the ballot, of the, of the vote.
So, we don't do postmarks, we do when they arrive?
Right, seven o'clock, whether it's mail-in, there's no post-dating.
Do all the towns do that?
Yep, have to.
All right, well, the reason this is important is because we need to be able to get, we need, we're going to mention this tonight. We're going to get out applications for absentee ballots like next week. People have to turn them around kind of in a hurry. I'm not wild about this, but I don't know what we do alternatively. Jessa, I saw your hand, maybe?
I'm just wondering if the July one deadline is so important now because there's still that thirty-day gap. We're into that again before we can actually get money.
You have to, yeah, I mean, we'd have to start borrowing again is the problem. And I think we only allowed last year authorization to borrow that year. The legislature seemed to think we had a default ability to borrow if they need to for, during July, as long as you don't need to be seventy-seven percent of the budget. But I think, you know, that, Lynn, Chris, am I wrong on this? And then I'm going to ask Kim to speak.
Am I okay to ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, if you, typically we wait for the state, by June thirtieth, we get our tax rate. And at that point, on June thirtieth, then we set the municipal and the town together and I have to send out tax bills by July fifteenth, because our first quarter payment is due August fifteenth and it's got to be thirty days out before the first payment is due. I know Athens is only once a year and Westminster, I believe, is on a different schedule than we are. So.
So, we're going to screw this up.
Supplement payments, supplement bills again this year in Grafton if we don't get tax rate in in time?
Well, then, last year we had to borrow money because we can't receive our money from the state until thirty days after the budget's approved in case somebody demands a revote, correct? So, we would need, I guess there's, if the ballots have to be received, not postmarked, as long as they're all counted by the thirtieth and it's certified as passed or failed, then it would be fine, right? We just can't receive any money from the state. Kim can set, the tax rate and everything will be set. We just can't receive the money for thirty days after, right?
Well, they probably just won't give us a tax rate from the state, even if, say you do it on the twenty-fifth and the budget passes, then the state will probably give us a rate, won't be by the thirtieth. And even if they give it, I can't set it legally and send out bills for thirty days. So, no matter what, Grafton's looking at sending out another revised tax.
Just like last year.
Bill again this year.
Oh, crap.
I think we knew that and that's why we had set on the April date.
I mean, I, we could talk about maybe the moving Grafton's first quarter payment rather than being August fifteenth, they could do September, but that's something that we don't, we'd have to talk with.
Right, that affects the entire town.
Well, I'm sorry. But, you know, it's not like.
You don't have much choice.
Yeah, again, again, do relay my apologies and if, you know, the select board wants to come and have me come in and say they can yell at me again, I can, more than willing to do that.
I believe one other town, either Athens or Westminster, is the same.
Yeah, didn't Westminster?
It's Westminster.
Yeah.
You guys are August and February.
The whole thing this last time because I got annoyed about this. That's right. Well. Especially for not letting them use a school. Okay. Can't fix it, so we'll face it.
We should informally make sure through whatever means, the website, et cetera, what the towns asked for last year for the cost of reprinting those bills and what this Australian hybrid ballot is going to cost, so people know, because that's, I'm guessing it's going to be like thirty thousand dollars. It's got to come out of that school budget that they're voting for.
Kind of hoping it's going to be more like ten, but you, I can't tell you, you're wrong. Mercy. Lynn, I think I saw your hand up where you're just unhappy. Lynn Carey.
I'm just fine. I'm just listening to all the scenarios and, you know, it's just kind of stressful, you know, where are we going to be? What do we, you know, how's it going to follow out and how's it going to sugar up? So, I'm just.
Well, you know, as one, as one of the people said at the, at the meeting of the eighteen and their private message to me, you know, this, this, this could turn into a fairly academic conversation depending on the sentiment of the voters. I would, I would ask you all, when we get this out, to do whatever one can in social media to lobby our friends and neighbors to pass this. I recognize how awful it is, but it'll be a lot worse if we fail to pass it and then get into the legislative meat grinder and have Phil Beruth decide what our budget is. Because it actually might be higher. That's the point that needs to be made. Mr. Beruth is talking about default budgets of a hundred and four percent of last year. We're, we're spending less than a hundred percent of this and if we vote this down and let the legislature take it, take over, that, that actually is a tax increase more than your board has proposed. And I would hope people understand that. We may need to make that point very clear to our, our brothers and sisters across the three towns. Yes, Kim?
Will you be doing any sort of publicity or small gatherings, somehow get it out to the townspeople? How do you plan on doing that? We can't have a, what we call a pre-town meeting. I'm just afraid by just sending out these requests and then asking them to vote on all this and the way the times are right now, these people aren't even going to realize that it's a lower budget than last year. We only had a handful of people that went to the meeting to pass this budget, last year's budget. And so, they're just going to look at that large figure, know what times we're in right now and I can see them all voting it down without having any explanation, any information, nothing.
Well, our, one of the folks from Westminster, Charlotte, and I'm forgetting Charlotte's last name, you'll, somebody may remind me.
Give her.
That I needed to get that done and I've got a draft version of it, but it, you know, my camera's broken, as you might be able to notice, and so I stopped, but I got to figure something out so I can get that done. And we'll get it up online. And then we'll also do some sort of open town halls. When does this, when's this select board meet in Grafton, for example?
Our next meeting's Monday.
That might be a little early, but we'll, but, but the one after that, I think I'd like to do it and I, I may ask my, my Westminster delegation to see if we can get us on their, their next, their, their next meeting and we can video that and again, have something for them as well. My, my, my thinking is we might want to have some stuff on our site and ask the individual towns if they'd like to have stuff on their sites as well, because I think people might like that a little better.
Tim, thank you for that. We absolutely agree with your suggestion. Jack, we've got a motion on the floor, which now I think would be amended to. Jack, we've got a motion on the floor, which now, uh, I think would be amended to be approve a warning, um, to be sent to voters for a vote by Australian ballot on June 25, 2020, including the Articles as discussed and modified tonight.
There you go. Let's, uh, I'm going to ask, since I think we've discussed this to death, I'm gonna ask for a yea or nay. All in favor? Got one, got two, got three, four, five. Guess we're in favor of that. Wonderful. Um, now it is 7:41, um, huh, I did, let me just briefly touch on what the item was on for the original for, pardon?
I think it's eight o'clock.
Oh, it is. Uh, the original item, uh, for discussion and action had to do with the Negotiations Committee and Solicitation of Board Priorities. We could, uh, discuss it tonight. Uh, I'm disinclined to do so, even though Deanna and all these folks came to see if we wanted to talk about it in more detail. Uh, that was gonna be the executive session because we want to solicit your views as each district, but I'm, I'm open to dropping it unless people want to talk about it tonight. Don't all say, yes, this is fun, let's talk about it tonight.
Not unless there's something that's going to be an even larger anticipated discussion at the next meeting. There's no agenda out.
Uh, I see the shadow that I believe is, um,
David.
David Clark backlit here. David?
Jack, the purpose of seeking input tonight from the Unified Elementary Board was in order to be prepared for a WNESU discussion next Tuesday night uh, for the purpose of instructing the Negotiations Committee as to what our positions were with regard to teacher negotiations. The high school had that discussion Monday night. I believe Rock has that discussion, uh, next Monday night. It was hoped that the Union Elementary could have that discussion tonight so that we would be able to instruct, um, our negotiators Tuesday. If the Union Elementary does not have that discussion tonight, then we will probably need to cancel the Tuesday night meeting, which was a special, uh, meeting specifically for the purpose of negotiations. But if this is your meeting, you've got to decide how you want to address the situation and not address it.
We're gonna keep this down. I'm mighty brief if we talk about it. What do you want?
I would, I would agree with David that, um, you should go into executive session and, and talk about it tonight. It might not be a long discussion, but at least you have it so we can move forward with the meeting that we are going to want for the SU Board on Tuesday night.
Let's put a hard 15-minute on this and then wrap it up. Uh, I will entertain a motion to go into executive, uh, session to discuss a item, a negotiations item. Uh, and, uh, we'll solicit a yea or nay to go into that executive session.
There's no action anticipated, right? So everyone.
We'd be, uh, sense of the group and to, and to invite, I might add, administration and, uh, the Chair of the, uh, Wyndham, uh, Northeast Supervisory Union Board to attend.
Jack, as we go into executive session, because I think that was agreed to, just to, uh, I would want us to thank all the folks who joined us again tonight and to remind everybody that our next regularly scheduled meeting is a week from today at 6:30. And so, um, the topic that brought many of you, uh, to this meeting tonight will be there for your public comment again.
Right, and, and, uh, why don't we, for the, then, uh, uh, director's comments are appropriate at this point. If anybody has additional ones. Uh, Melissa? All right, Cheryl?
Nothing further from me right now. Thanks again to everybody, though.
Jessa?
No, um, Fact TV's just in the chat confirming that there's no action anticipated in the executive session.
There is no action anticipated and thank you guys for being here as always. Uh, Lynn?
Nothing.
Charles?
Nope.
Dito. All right, thank you for, and I'm, I'm glad to see you, Charles. Uh, we missed you. Uh, I've, I've got nothing, so, uh, all in favor of going to executive session, say aye.
Aye.